Good evening. Welcome to the Durham Planning Commission. The members of the Durham Planning Commission are appointed by the City Council and the County Board of Commissioners to make recommendations to the elected officials. We emphasize that the elected officials have the final say on any issue before us tonight. While this meeting is being conducted in person, it is also accessible using the Zoom virtual meeting platform. In the virtual meeting platform, public participants do not have the ability to talk or be seen on video by default. In order to maintain meeting decorum and a discernible record of the meeting, the chat function has been disabled. For those attending in person, if you plan to speak on the agenda tonight, please go to the table to my left and sign up to speak. When speaking, please state your name and your address clearly when you come to the podium. Please speak directly into the microphone. If you are attending the meeting virtually, you will be given the ability to speak at the appropriate time. If you have pre-registered, your name will be called so you can make your comments just like an in-person public hearing. You may also call in during the meeting tonight by dialing 1-301-715-8592. If you call in during the meeting, you will need to wait until the particular public hearing you are interested in starts. After all pre-registered speakers have shared their comments, I will ask if there is anyone else wishing to speak. At that point, you will need to digitally raise your hand by pressing *9 on your phone, and when recognized, state your name and address before making comments. The applicant has a total of 10 minutes for presentation. Each speaker after the applicant has two minutes to speak. Commissioners have five minutes for Q and A and will only be called upon to speak after -- for a second time after all other commissioners have chosen to speak for a first time. Please have your thoughts and questions organized. Commissioners, as a reminder, after the public hearing is closed, you attain the floor by being recognized by the chair. Commission members, please remember you share this time with your fellow commissioners, keep your comments, questions pithy, and please don't repeat topics that have already been discussed or questioned. The time to make all public statements is before motions are made. Once a motion is on the floor, a further discussion regarding that motion must all come after a second. All motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. Commissioners, if you are not ready to move a case forward, please indicate as such when questioned. Finally, I ask everyone here and on the Zoom, commission members, staff, and the public to conduct themselves in a courteous and respectful manner. If someone fails to act in that manner, the chair will ask the offending person or persons to leave the room or to be muted on Zoom until such time they regain personal control. If decorum fails to be restored, the chair will recess the meeting until a genuine commitment to act respectful and courteous is observed. After the case you are here for ends and you want to leave, please leave the room quietly and waiting for conversations until you have exited those glass doors behind us for your post-case discussion as the commission continues to its remaining business on the agenda. Thank you. May we have the roll call vote, please? And that's the last time I will make that speech?
Just a moment, I have a new computer and I'm still getting used to it. Before we begin, I'll just like to acknowledge one of our new commissioners, Commissioner Montez. This is his first meeting, so grant him a welcome. And I don't think I properly welcomed Commissioners Ritchie or Bailey last month, so thank you for your service. I'd also like to mention that we still have Commissioner Maciver's seat. His term actually ended in June, and his seat is still open, so if you live in Lebanon Township and would like to be a member of the Planning Commission, for those who don't know, Lebanon Township, basically think north of the Eno and west of the Little River, so think Roxborough Road, Guess Road, out north of the Eno River, that area. We have a vacant seat and it's been available now for about five months, so if you're interested, please apply through the county clerk's office. Chair Cameron?
Here.
Vice Chair Shigeras?
Here.
Commissioner Capers?
Here.
Commissioner -- oh, no, he's not on there. Commissioner Chakowski? Commissioner Kopack?
Here.
Commissioner Hunter?
Here.
Getting used to that. Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Here.
Commissioner Woke?
Here.
And Commissioner Chakowski?
Here.
Peontac? Did you call Commissioner Peontac?
Oh, Commissioner Peontac and Commissioner Neinkirchner?
Yes.
They are not here, but we do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. All right, we do have a quorum established. There are no adjustments -- okay, you got her. There are no adjustments to the agenda. Next up is the approval of the minutes in the consistency statements from the August 12, 2025 meeting. May I have a motion, please, to approve? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kopack and seconded by Commissioner Hunter to approve the minutes and consistency statement from the August 12, 2025 meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, yes, and we did not properly have any of the new commissioners, I think, last time either introduce themselves, correct, at the meeting? Yeah, so let's go ahead and if you want to introduce yourself and just tell a couple sentences about yourself and why you're interested in the Planning Commission. Yep, you can start over here.
Sure, thank you so much. My name is Juan Montez, resident here in Durham. Some of you may know me, some of you may not, but I'm super excited to be able to bring some expertise to land development. I'm a civil engineer by trade. I am a land developer, so I do understand how this works, trying to bring some technical analysis and experience to the board and hopefully bring some balance to what I think could be a lot of potential here in Durham. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bailey?
Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Anitra Bailey. I'm a Durham resident. As of May of 1999, I came here two years after I graduated from North Carolina A&amp;T. My primary background is within corporate citizenship, anything dealing with community investments, and I have a strong passion for strategic planning and for just the logistics of how processes work. And seeing the growth in the community over the years, I just became interested in the process and just wanted to learn more about it, so that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Ramsey Ritchie. I am a sustainable energy and affordable housing expert, so what I do in my day-to-day job, and really interested in what it means for cities and communities to grow affordably for everyone. So that's why I wanted to be on the Planning Commission. I'm really excited to be here.
All right, thank you all. All right, we are going to move to our public hearings for our zoning map changes. The first case is Z230042 Lee Village Center. Are we ready? No?
Yes, did you do a motion for the minutes?
Yes.
You did.
We did that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Do I need to slow down?
Got a little distracted there. Before I begin, I would like to state for the record that all items have been advertised in accordance with state and local laws, and affidavits are on file in the Planning Department. This case is Z2300042 Lee Village Center. The request is to rezone from Residential Suburban 20 to Compact Suburban Design Core with a development plan, Compact Suburban Design Support 1 with a development plan, and Compact Design -- support -- Compact Suburban Design Support 2 with a development plan. The size of the project is about 81.75 acres. It is within the Lee Village Compact Neighborhood and is within the Place Type of Transit Opportunity As I mentioned before, the existing zoning is Residential Suburban 20. It is surrounded by a mix of zoning districts, primarily Residential Compact to the east and north, Planned Development Residential and RS20 to the south, and more RS20 to the west. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. It is located north of the Terminus of Cambian Place at -- sorry, that's not correct. It is located west of Farrington Road and north of NC54. It is also near the interchange of 54 and 40. It is bounded on the west by George King Road. As mentioned before, the property is currently Transit Opportunity Area on the Place Type map. There are several notable commitments to be aware of. There are two different commitments regarding income-restricted units, either townhouses or apartments. Elevators are committed for any multifamily buildings over two-story. There are additional project boundary buffers to the south, and also design commitments as well as transit improvement commitments subject to Go Durham and Go Triangle approval. Additional stormwater control measures a minimum 9% tree coverage commitment. And specifically regarding transit -- I'm sorry, traffic impact analyses, rather than providing one at the zoning stage, what they have committed to is providing a transit impact analysis for each site plan that would be submitted under this zoning district. An attachment or an exhibit to the list of commitments in the textual development plan is this street and block diagram that's been provided, showing the consistency with the adopted Collector Street Plan and the road network and greenway trails that would be provided as part of the overall development. Neighborhood meetings were held in accordance with the Neighborhood Meeting Guidelines on April 11, 2023, and August 6, 2025. Six comments have been received by staff in relation to this case on the Durham Resoning Explorer. Five are against, and one was neutral. The proposal is consistent with the Place Type Map designation of Transit Opportunity Area as it is in the proposed zoning district that encourages urban streetscape form through bicycle, pedestrian, and transit-oriented development. The Compact Suburban Design District and the Compact Design Districts both were intended for the Transit Opportunity Area Place Type, and the proposal is consistent with 19 of 31 applicable comprehensive plan policies. Staff and the applicants are available for any questions.
Thank you. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. May the applicant come forward after the fire truck is done.
Good evening, Chair Cameron, Vice Chair Shigeras, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Patrick Byker. I live at 2614 Stewart Drive. I'm an attorney with Morningstar Law Group, and I'm here tonight representing Sylvan Lee LLC. While Sylvan Lee is the majority property owner for this case entitled Lee Village Center, I need to emphasize at the outset that Lee Village Center is being put forward by longtime family owners and not a developer. Oh, sorry. I thought I was projecting pretty well. The Booker family has owned some of the acreage in Lee Village Center since the American Revolution. I think that was about 250 years ago. The majority of Lee Village Center has been owned by the Harris family since 1979, which is a mere 46 years ago. I want to emphasize that the patriarch of the Harris family was the legendary city planning professor Britt Harris, a fellow in the American Institute of Certified Planners who passed away in 2012. Back in 2000, in recognition of Professor Harris's work, the American Institute of Certified Planners inducted him into its College of Fellows, describing Professor Harris's work as, quote, "A pathfinder who over 40 years ago foresaw the importance of computer simulations in planning, the need for applied location theory, and the salience of human values and behavior in urban development," unquote. Professor Harris's son Jed, his daughter-in-law Wendy, and his granddaughter Laurel are all here with us tonight. They are spearheading the long-term development of Lee Village Center. I'm also joined by Dan Jewell, the Regional Director of Thomason-Hutton, to represent these longtime property owners in southwest Durham. Over the past 15 or 20 years, Dan and I have become good friends with the Booker and the Harris families, and so it is a privilege to represent them this evening. At the outset, I noted that the staff report mentions the Natural Heritage Program. It is important to recognize that this program relates only to the western edge of Lee Village Center along George King Road. As you can see in our presentation, this area will primarily be a dedicated greenway. It is also necessary to emphasize that the Natural Heritage Program is a non-regulatory information gathering program aimed at three things. The first is to inventory North Carolina's natural areas. The second is to gather and use information from those inventories to guide recommendations to create a network of nature preserves. And the third is to encourage the protection of natural heritage. Of course, that principle could be rephrased as, if you do not touch this land, it could become a natural heritage area. That principle would apply generically to many areas within 299 square miles of Durham County. However, and this is a big however, the non-regulatory Natural Heritage Program does not account for the fact that for at least 20 years, our Planning Department has designated the parcels you are considering tonight for transit-oriented development. From its adoption back in 2005, our former comprehensive plan called for Lee Village to be a higher-density mixed-use development as shown on the 2005 Future Land Use Map. Our ownership team has always strongly supported that vision for this area of Durham, and what was stated in 2005 was confirmed in the Durham Future Place Type Map adopted in October of 2023 with a designation of Transit Opportunity Area. In our recently adopted comprehensive plan, a key component and perhaps the dominant theme is creating the 15-minute community. Based on my 30 years of working with our Planning Department, I would say that Compact Suburban Design is the best means available to implement that goal of a 15-minute community. In that regard, it is instructive to look at UDO Section 4.5.3, quote, "The Compact Suburban Design District is intended to encourage development of appropriate urban streetscape and form through bicycling, pedestrian, and transit-oriented development through various sub-districts similar to the downtown design district," unquote. Accordingly, our team has been very sensitive to the surrounding existing neighborhoods by designating areas within Lee Village Center across the southern edge as Support 1 and Support 2, as shown on this slide. These Support 1 and Support 2 area designations are binding commitments of our rezoning application along with a 30-foot, .6 opacity buffer along the southern property line adjacent to the existing neighborhood. Therefore, these sub-district boundaries become enforceable zoning conditions if we are fortunate enough to receive approval. Next, I wish to address Policy 165 referenced at the bottom of Page 11 and top of Page 12 that has to do with those infamous donut holes. I am happy to report that we are making good progress on two out of the three donut holes. We have a handshake agreement for submitting an annexation petition for the parcel at the end of Wendell Road, which is the yellow rectangle that you see at the top, just to the right of the center here. We also have an agreement with the parcel at the end of Hornbeam Drive on the eastern edge of Lee Village Center, which is going through an estate proceeding. After the estate is closed, we expect that parcel to become part of Lee Village Center as well. While the three parcels at the end of Crescent Drive probably won't be annexed anytime soon, at least two of the three donut holes noted in the staff report should be fixed in the near future. As shown on Page 4 of your staff report, there are ranges of dwelling units stated for each sub-district. Taken as a whole, the number of units in Lee Village Center ranges from a minimum of 1,667 to a maximum of 2,294. This lack of a specific number in this range of over 600 units reflects the fact that this is an ownership team and not a developer applying for this zoning map change. Since there is no specific program of development, it was not possible to perform an overall traffic impact analysis. Rather, every phase of Lee Village Center will have to perform its traffic impact analysis at the time of site plan. This allows for increased background traffic to be counted, which in the long run will make sure that required traffic improvements mitigate all the traffic generated in the area. You may well hear objections tonight based on traffic, and another fact to show how seriously our team took this issue is that drive-through facilities, either for a restaurant, or for a bank, or a pharmacy, or for anything, are strictly forbidden. Convenience stores with gasoline sales are forbidden as well. I reference those use prohibitions because it shows how the ownership group for Lee Village Center has taken concrete steps to reduce its financial return on the sale of this acreage. Moreover, the owners have committed to treat the 100-year storm and exceed required UDOT tree coverage. Similarly, the ownership team has stepped up to the plate on affordable housing. I personally do not know any other owners who would willingly take this big of a hit to their resale value. I hope all the members of the Planning Commission noted that there is a text commitment on Page 4 that imposes affordable housing requirements on any residential developer who develops a phase of Lee Village Center. In closing, Compact Suburban Design is the zoning district that probably is better than any other zoning district at implementing our comprehensive plan for creating 15-minute I think this assertion is backed up by this quote from former Planning Commissioner and current City Councilmember Nate Baker, who on April 21 of this year, during the approval of the Page Miami Design District rezoning, said, quote, "The more property we can put into zoning districts like this, compact suburban design, the better. The more pedestrian and transit-oriented we can be as a city moving forward," unquote. For all these reasons, we respectfully ask for your approval, and Dan and I will be happy to answer any questions. We'd like to reserve the remainder of our time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the signing sheet. We have a Dr. Shelby. Please speak into the mic and state your name and your address.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am Chris Selby. I live at 138 Celeste Circle in Durham City. At the Collector Street Plan meetings, we learned that Collector Streets are physically and spatially designed to link local streets with arterials so as to provide connectivity and best traffic movement. The adopted Collector Street Plan map includes two north-south collectors linking local streets in Lee Village as well as southwestern Drive with the arterial NC54. The problem with the Lee Village plan is, while the collectors are in their plan, their connections to NC54 are not. Rather, the two north-south collectors in Lee Village link to NC54 through two local streets. These two local streets are in my neighborhood, Eastwood Park. Collector Street traffic would be unsafe on our local streets, especially considering absence of sidewalks, narrow streets, and pedestrian traffic of all ages, including strollers, pets, and local employees. Amplifying the problem is the plan to atroughy the Farrington Road intersection with NC54 and reroute southwest Durham Drive through the two north-south collectors. To be successful, the Lee Village plan should include connecting both collectors as collectors directly and properly with NC54 as a committed element. It does not matter whether the connections are made by developers or in coordination with the state. If the connections are not in the plan, then with the proposed phased site plan approval process and possible state involvement, making the needed connections will become an exercise in passing the buck. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next, we have Phil Post.
My name is Philip Post. I live at 104 St. Andrews Place, 27517. I was speaking on behalf of myself and 124 houses in the Oaks subdivision in Orange County. I've lived in, I mean, in Durham County, but I've lived in Durham County in the southwest area about two years longer than the Harrises have loaned their land. I speak to unite, saying that the project is too dense and it doesn't contain open space, usable open space. You can pencil it out, it's 28 units an acre, but by the time these folks subtract the riparian buffers, the wetlands, the street wet arrays, we know that this is going to be developed at much higher than 30 units an acre. It's really a high-density urban development in an area next to a one-lane gravel road, next to natural heritage lands, next to sensitive areas owned by the Botanical Garden. This kind of density is not appropriate because it's not transit-oriented. We've heard a lot about transit tonight. The staff report, I think, is an error. It says that the nearest transit stop is .8 miles away. That's not true. The transit stop in front of the Circle K gas station on the south side of 54 is 1.28 miles from this development. It is not transit-oriented, and as you well know, there's no transit now, and there's no transit proposed in the long-range Durham plans to provide transit. So I'm afraid, even though we've heard about transit tonight, it's not appropriate. The second thing about the staff report that I really take exception to is the closeness to a park. The staff report says it's 1.2 miles to Lee Park, and it's actually almost two and a half miles. You have to drive. There's absolutely no way for a pedestrian or a bike to get across the Interstate 40 interchange safely to get to that park. Without a park, and with this kind of density, maybe 6,000 people leaving these 2,300 units, we need to have open space on this tract. And I've sent you a map to suggest 5% open space, similar to, actually less than, the adjoining apartment project that was approved in April. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. Time is up. Next, we have Haley Shin.
Hello. My name is Haley Shin, and I am speaking as property owner at 6008 Crescent, which abuts the project on the southeast corner. I echo a lot of the same concerns as the speaker in front of me. This project, we know it's been in development for a while. It made a lot more sense as a transportation opportunity area when the light rail was predicted to be coming right through here. Now, where it is, it will be contributing to more sprawl in Durham. With the density that's proposed on 80 acres, you all just recently saw the gateway at Briar Creek that had the same density spread out over 300 acres. I know they said they're going to do piecemeal traffic impact analyses, but what we saw that roughly the same number of units would provide 3,400 car trips, that's what the gateway at Briar Creek was estimating, so we can estimate that this transit island, because there is no transit here, can reasonably contribute 3,400 car trips. I am also concerned about the environmental impact with this being watershed for Jordan Lake. This area will be developed at some point. I feel that this plan has a lot of work to do to meet with the personality of the neighborhood and what is there. It is a residential area, and yeah, it's coming, but this could use a lot of work, not to mention the impacts on the local schools. Jordan is already over capacity for students, and certainly a 2,000-unit development will contribute to that stress on DPS. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Those that are on the Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand. If you've called in, hit *9, and I'll begin calling on people on the Zoom. There's no one else in the galley that'd like to speak? It's here? No? Okay. First, we have Ryan Stewart.
Hi, yes, I'm Ryan Stewart, and I am calling as a resident of Chapel Run, and I am actually currently our community's HOA, so I will be speaking on my behalf as a resident as well as my fellow residents. well as my fellow residents. I'm gonna probably reiterate a lot of things that have already been said, and the biggest concern that our community has is that this development simply does not align or conform with the surrounding area and current use. Macy Grove, Celeste Circle, Crossland, Chapel Hill Run are all comprised of lots that are a tenth of an acre to half an acre for residential use. George King Road has multiple residential homes and some rural areas, including horse property, and also a UNC Minish, a lot of our enjoyment of our current community, and that this massive development is simply not going to mirror what the surrounding area currently dictates. Some of our additional concerns include a series of loss of our privacy, traffic, infrastructure, safety, property values, as well as the environmental impact. I have to say that I feel that residents surrounding this development will suffer a great loss, and the developer simply is trying to overuse this land and maximize their benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Sugg.
Thank you. My name is Brian Sugg, and I live at 304 Lancaster Drive in the Oaks Villas Community that's just inside the western boundary of Durham County. Our neighborhood is within half a mile of the proposed Lee Village Center. I am against this development in its current form, primarily because of the high level of density that is proposed with upwards of 2,200 planned units. I would like to direct the attention of the commission to the western boundary of this project that runs along George King Road. Directly across George King Road, as has been stated, the majority of this boundary is the Upper Little Creek Waterfowl Impoundment. This is federal property that is leased to the state and managed by the North Carolina Wildlife Commission. As such, it is also open game lands that is available for public hunting. Anyone, myself included, who lives within a half mile of this land can attest to hearing the regular sounds of gunfire during hunting season, especially this time of year as we approach October and November. It's commonplace for us to be awakened by this. With thousands of residents being proposed directly adjacent to a waterfowl impoundment that is used for public hunting, it's really hard to comprehend. I don't think it's fair to the future residents of such a dense, mixed development to be subject to the regular sound of gunfire during hunting season, and it can be very unsettling for those of us who already live in the area today. That said, I would encourage the planning commission, when considering zoning around this area, not only for Lee Village Center, but for other future developments, to please pay close attention to the management of residential zoning in relation to how neighboring wetlands are utilized for recreation. To me, it would seem more logical to maintain denser development closer to the interstate and transition with lower density to single-family homes approaching waterfowl impoundments such as this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tim Carter. Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. In addition to all the concerns that have been raised previously, I want to point out that there are a lot of very mature trees in that area.
Sir, please state your name and your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tim Carter, 220 Macy Grove, Chapel Hill, 27517. In addition to what's already been said, I want to point out that there are a lot of very mature trees in that area that are going to disappear, and there are already significant water runoff problems extending down George King Road into the Chapel Run area and through Celeste Circle. Those problems are probably going to increase once you have more impermeable surface in the area of Lee Village Center, and I don't see any real acknowledgement of that runoff problem and how it might be addressed in the current proposal documents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the Zoom wishing to speak on this case? Please use the raise Is there anyone else in the audience here in person? All right, at this time, the applicant can come back up and address the community concerns. One more? Oh, sorry. Sarah, sorry, Patrick. Sarah Thielen.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Sarah Thielen, living in 1105 Doc Nichols Road in Durham, North Carolina. So there was talk about shortages and impact to the education system, and the previous meeting there was talk about impact to the fire and EMS. My question for folks is where you expect firefighters and teachers to live. The median salary of a firefighter is $66,000, a little over $66,000, which means they would have to give about 47% of their monthly salary to live in some of these homes that are being proposed. A teacher is even a lower $56,000, 55% of their monthly salary. So some of these denser townhomes, townhome developments that have been proposed would actually be affordable for some of these folks. I just want to have people keep that in mind. Something else that I've...
I'm sorry, Sarah, are you commenting on Lee Village or on Sage Brook Townhouses?
Oh, Sage Brook, I'm so sorry.
Okay, yes, yours is the next case. Thank you.
I'm so sorry.
That's all right. All right, back to the... There you go. Back to our regular scheduled program.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Patrick Baker for the applicant. Very briefly, I didn't mention it because it's a UDOT requirement. There is a 5% public open space requirement in the Compact Suburban Design District. So my friend, Mr. Post, who referenced 5% public open space, well, we're doing that because the UDOT requires it. I also wanted to address some of the environmental concerns and introduce Dan Jewell to talk about native plantings as a way to address that issue.
Thank you, Patrick. Dan Jewell, Thomason Hutton, 1025 Gloria Avenue in Durham. So we've had some conversations here over the last day or two about some of the environmental issues. We'd like to offer an additional text commitment tonight that 50% of the required plant materials will be native plant materials. I think many of you heard me say before, there's not enough native plant materials grown in a three-state area to provide a project of this size, but we'll commit to at least a minimum of 50% of the plant materials will be native plant materials. Secondly, I've actually had some email conversations with my friend Phil Post about the natural heritage inventory area that might be there. And I think if we could pull up the map that shows the street network, I don't know if we have that anywhere. There you go. So, if you can see the cursor here, I'd just like to explain, the Collector Road plan that Mr. Selby referred to does in fact show George King Roads swinging around and coming down in this location here. What it does is, it cuts off this triangular portion of the property, and this property, by the way, there's a house right here, okay? That was the... Am I out of town time for rebuttal?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'll cover that later during the Q and A period. How's that sound?
All right. The public hearing is now closed, and we are now open for a commissioner discussion and question. No, do you have a question? Commissioner Montez.
Yeah, I have just one question either to the applicant or staff. On the staff report, it says right-of-way dedication or reservation, the Falcon Bridge Road Extension shall have a right-of-way...
Talk into the microphone.
I'm sorry. Yep. That the Falcon Bridge Road Extension shall have a right-of-way of 110 feet wide. Is this for some reason implicating that we're extending right-of-way from Falcon Bridge and even looking at... Is that a mistake by any chance that we're looking at the wrong road here? Is that meant to say Huntington Bridge, Huntington Ridge Place? The Falcon Bridge Road is a little roundabout across 54, so...
It becomes a new north-south collector road.
Okay.
Yeah, they have new collector roads in there.
Okay, that makes sense then. That clarifies. I was looking at the map just across 54, and it looked like Falcon Bridge Road was simply, like, almost a roundabout. But, yeah, I don't have any questions. I would just want to state that knowing, as the applicant said, that this is an owner who is applying for this case and looking at the affordable housing incentives that have been put forward, 60 and 80% and up to 100% AMI for 30 years is incredibly... I mean, that's impressive. That's more than what most developers would do, so I commend that. And then, like, the only other question I had, I understand the development plan is an exhibit, and, you know, it's just meant for more or less a description of what it's going to be. The greenway along the left side, along George King Road, it just seems to meander across what would be a collector road and across George King. Is there any form of thought, and I understand the TIA is going to come later, is there any form of thought of just addressing the crossing there, if it does cross that, that, you know, there'll be a pedestrian crossing or something along those lines? Okay.
Do you want to state that in the microphone, Dan, so everyone watching can hear?
Yes, we're currently working with NC DOT. In fact, we have a call tomorrow to start this conversation. But yes, there would be a... We would advocate for a pedestrian push-button crossing at that location for that.
Great, great. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Copac, do you have any?
You anticipated that I had questions.
Yes, I can read body language.
Yeah. So, a few questions. First of all, I'd love to just address where you were going around this kind of triangle parcel on the southwest corner, and what your thoughts are about how that can be managed, how that intersects with the natural heritage federally protected sites to the west. And I have some follow-ups, but first, I'd just love to hear what you were going to say.
Sure. If there's a way to bring... I don't know if there's something I can do to bring this screen back up again on the monitor. Very good. So, this triangular piece of property down in the extreme southwest corner, a portion of that is in the potential natural heritage inventory area on the map. None of the rest of the property is within that zone, at least based on the map that the state sent us about a year ago showing where these areas are. So, right now, in that inventory, you have George King Road, the gravel road that was mentioned. You have a house that's about 45 or 50 years old. But that, what I'll call remnant parcel, we have no intention of building buildings, or parking lot, or roads, or anything like that on that. And we are happy to commit to that property being used only for open space and potentially for some stormwater management, but we would commit that the stormwater management be in the form of a constructed wetlands. And if you've seen a constructed wetland area, it's, you know, marshy, has plants that live in there, that sort of thing. And just as a reminder, the core area, the Army Corps of Engineers Wildlife Area, is a constructed wetland built in the late '70s and early '80s. So we will make a commitment that the only type of development in that corner, and we can work with staff to describe that, would potentially be a constructed wetlands to assist with stormwater management for the project, because, again, we're committing to managing to 100-year storm. So, does that help answer your question?
It does, yes, and that leads to a question for staff. There were some of the policies that were shown as inconsistent because of a lack of management, because of the tiny sliver in that parcel. Would this approach address those inconsistencies?
Most likely, yes. We might need to look at what the final language is and review that against our policy, but it certainly goes much closer to meeting those policies than having no language whatsoever.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, the next question is around affordable housing. I do appreciate seeing the commitment to the 9% when it comes to the multifamily, as well as the 3% for the townhomes. It's a little bit hard to evaluate without knowing what the plans are for total number of units, particularly for townhouses, so I wonder if you could speak to that. Also, typically, under Policy 40, we look for that 30-year commitment, which you offer for the multifamily units, but not for the townhomes.
Right.
And is that something that can be offered? And I will just highlight that while it is a stronger commitment that we see for most cases, and I do acknowledge that, for TOA areas, you know, in the comprehensive plan, the ambition is to have 20%. But I'll just leave it at the questions around units regarding townhomes and the 20 years versus the 30 years.
Yeah, thank you for that very thoughtful question, Commissioner Copac. The only... The townhouses only go in S2, right? Generally, they'll be located in the S2, you know, if you figure 10 units an acre, 100 townhomes, maybe? Yeah, probably about 100 townhomes, just spitballing that number. So, you know, that would set aside some of those. That 10-year for-sale product has always been a challenging policy discussion. Certainly speaking for my family, the way we built wealth was to buy a house in Durham 31, 30 or 31 years ago, and see it, appreciate it, and then be able to use the equity there to help our children. The longer you have a 10-year requirement on a for-sale product, the less equity families have in order to build generational wealth. I'm happy to talk to our client team to see what they think about going from 20 years to 30 years, but I think that's a very difficult policy discussion, Commissioner Copac. And that's why we picked 20 years for the townhouses and 30 years for the apartments.
And I realize my time is up, but I'll just say, it sounds like a philosophical question, but the plan does really push us to look for that 30 years.
Right.
And it seems like this will be the smaller percentage of the overall affordability that's being provided, and so I just wanted to make sure to raise that and push on that.
We'll certainly think about it. Keep in mind, this area is not in a qualified census tract for low-income housing tax credits, and so that makes construction of affordable housing very expensive in this location. So, your point's well taken. We'll certainly deliberate about it going forward, and we may be able to increase that. I just referenced that for discussions that we've had in the home...
Commissioner Ritchie.
I just want to turn to Mr. Post's note about transit opportunities. It does seem like it would be a missed opportunity if this weren't a really robust opportunity for transit in Durham. You will talk a little bit about site plan discussions with Go Durham and Go Triangle. Can you talk about those a little bit more? And then, are there any areas where you can make more direct, more sustaining commitments that would enable a sort of commitment to transit moving forward?
Yeah, the commitments for transit infrastructure, again, go with each site plan, and that's... I'm glad you raised that. It's important to look at how our transit system has evolved over time. When I was chairman of the Durham Area Transit Authority, people thought we were crazy to run Route 2 all the way down Andrew Avenue to this area that people were talking about that was going to be called Briar Creek. Well, you know, 20 years later, that looks like it was a good... 25 years later, it looks like that was a good investment, because that's where the Raleigh and the Durham transit systems connect, and obviously Briar Creek is an important retail hub for that part of the triangle. I think the same would be true here, sir, and so that's why every site plan has to provide those facilities if the city and Go Triangle say, yeah, this is what we're going to do. And I think these transit systems are just like the road networks that evolve over time. And so I'm convinced that with the growth at UNC, with the growth coming at RTP, with RTP 3.0, what we're looking at right now is like equidistant from those two enormous employment hubs. And so I personally believe that... And so I personally believe that, that Go Triangle and Go Durham will take the, take advantage of this tax commitment in order to provide service here so that people have, they have, they'll have benches, they'll have shelters, they'll have all the amenities that they want in order to make transit a viable option to go to UNC and to go to RTP. So, I hope that answers your question. I certainly see that playing out over the next.
Go back to Dr. Shelby's comment about collector street planning. Can you tell us what it would take to connect to 54 directly as opposed to going through residential streets?
My understanding is that that would just use existing rights-of-way. That would just be a connection that would happen largely through the existing rights-of-way that, that have been on the city of Durham or the NC DOT road network for many years. That collector street plan that we have referenced here, that's been in place for 20 years.
And we are following that plan. The Transportation Department made sure that we followed that plan religiously in terms of appointments. So, I understand Mr. Selby's concerns, but this plan was first developed in 2005 through a lot of robust public input, was adopted in 2007, and that's exactly how it's supposed to connect to NC 54. You know, I can understand that neighborhood still has concerns over that, but, you know, we are thinking long-range based on decisions that conversations in Durham have led to the comprehensive plan and the future land use map and the place type map that we have today.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Shigeris.
Yes, it's probably for Erlene Thomas. Along with the collector street question, is George King Road gonna be completely rerouted to connect to Crosslands? Or is the George King Road, the gravel road that exists there, gonna stay? And then the paved road is gonna connect to Crossland? Do you know that yet?
So, Erlene Thomas, Planning and Development. So, yes, the George King Road realignment, it will be the paved connection to Crossland, which is following a collector street plan. Better. So, the George King Road realignment will be the paved connection that connects over to Crossland, and I imagine that the existing gravel dirt road will remain in some form or fashion with that realignment.
Yeah, 'cause it shows, I don't know, I mean, the gravel road is, that's where the waterfowl impoundment access point is, so that will maintain the gravel road and then the main road will be the paved.
Correct.
To George King realignment.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Woke.
Hey, so with a project of this size, it looks like you're calculated to add 429 students to the school system. And I calculated that out to be $2.3 million in annual operating costs for that. And I know one of the comprehensive plan policies is to do some type of mitigation for schools. So I was wondering if that's something that you might consider.
I'm glad you raised that, Commissioner. Speaking for both Mr. for Durham Public Schools, and by all means, we will reach out to him because in this compact suburban design district, schools are a permitted use. There's no special use permit required, and so, yes, we will have that conversation. The Harris family has authorized us to do that. And if, if Mr. Davis were still there at DPS, I think we would have had the conversation there by now. But unfortunately, there was turnover, there was a vacancy for a while, but now they have a person in that position as a facilities director, we're happy to reach out to him and see if there's any interest in a school site within Lee Village Center.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Thank you, Chair. Is the applicant willing to provide any additional commitments for minimum square footage for non-residential uses?
I don't think so. We don't have any, we don't have any way to gauge what demand will be for office, retail, commercial, life science, all those types. It's very, unfortunately, that's, we live in a time period right now that has tremendous uncertainty in the market. It used to be we could look at mixed-use projects like Davis Park, for example, on Davis Drive and Hobson Road. We could give you a pretty good guesstimate on retail, office, and residential when markets were a lot more stable. Right now, I think demand for offices, say, how much retail would be demanded based on the range of residential there. So, that's what made the compact suburban design district so appealing, is that it allows for flexibility with responding to market demand. And of course, what's, what's great about it is that the uses will all be interconnected by pedestrian bicycle infrastructure, but we're not able to commit to minimum square footages for non-residential uses at this time. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Kopak, do you have more questions?
Just wondering more about the, the traffic impact assessment. So I definitely see advantages to it being phased. Typical fear of a project of this size, if it were done all at the outset, it wouldn't reflect then the changes in other traffic over time. So I see the merits of that, but I just wanna understand perhaps this, for future, I'm educating myself here, it'd be a better question to ask staff before the meeting instead of during, so thank you and thank you, Chair. But just understanding why it is that the project of this wouldn't need the TIA at the outset, even if then there was a phasing over time to provide a better assessment. So perhaps it's a question for Thomas Transportation.
Erlene Thomas, again, Planning and Development. So, for this particular application, we aren't able to assess the traffic impacts because we don't have commitments to exact uses and intensity of those uses. Each type of use generates, you know, trips based on what the use is, and without that, we don't have a means to assess the traffic.
So we don't need to know at this stage the uses and the density, and because of that, we don't have the information required in order to do the TIA at this stage?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we would then do it at the site plan stage.
Okay, all right. Thank you all.
Just as a reminder, this is an owner applicant, not a developer. So this is not the developer. Yeah, so that's why we don't have those specific uses and those, that's why we don't have the TIA. Yep. Any additional questions? Are we ready to move this case forward? Yes, yeah, I have a motion to move this case forward, please. I was gonna write out a script for this.
I don't know if I have this right. Motion to.
Say, Chair, I move to.
Chair, I move to approve.
To move case.
Move case Z to 300042 Lee Village Center.
With a favorable recommendation.
With a favorable recommendation?
To City Council. To City Council.
To City Council.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Ritchie and seconded by Chair Shigeris to move case Z 23 00042 Lee Center, Lee Village Center forward with a favorable recommendation to City Council. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeris.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Capers.
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Kopak.
Yes.
Commissioner Montez.
Yes.
Commissioner Neinkirchner.
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes.
Commissioner Woke.
No.
The motion passes 10 to 1.
Thank you. Next up, we have Z 24 00042 Sage Brook Townhouses. May we have the staff report, please?
Oh, there it is, okay. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Erin Kane again with the Planning and Development Department. This is case Z 24 00040 Sage Brook Townhouses. This, this application is for a little over 17 acres off of Burton Road near Chadwick Place. The current zoning is residential rural and residential suburban 20. The applicant is requesting planned development residential 6.905. The existing place type is mixed residential neighborhood, and the proposal is for up to 120 townhouses. As mentioned earlier, the exist, the current zoning is residential rural and residential suburban 20. As you can see on the map, it looks like it's all residential rural, but there is one very small, very thin parcel along the northern and eastern edges of the site. That parcel is RS 20. The rest of the site is RR. It is primarily, oh, it is primarily residential suburban 20 to the east of the site and residential rural to the south and west. The aerial map shows the general location of the project. It is situated east of Burton Road, north of Cheek Road, and the Chadwick Road eventually dead-ends into it on the north. The place type map shows that it is mixed residential neighborhood, surrounded primarily by existing residential on the place type map of primarily single-family homes. Across Burton Road is additional mixed residential neighborhood. The applicant has included several textual commitments in its development plan, including prohibiting mass grading, up to 10, or 10 income restricted units at 80% AMI for 30 years, a contribution of $60,000 to Durham Public Schools, required plantings be native species, residential buildings will meet Energy Star standards, increase in the tree preservation to 20.5% of the site, limiting impervious surface to 38%, and a limit on impacted steep slopes to 10.4%. On the development plan, two access points are shown, one from Chadwick, Chadwick Place, the other from Burton Road. As you can see, stream buffers will need to be impacted to add, access the majority of the site from either of those two locations. The 100-foot buffers that are shown are required, and the predominance of the tree preservation will be within those stream buffers. Since the site is next to existing residential parcels and commits to not mass-grading the site, no project buffering, boundary buffers will be required. Neighborhood meetings were held in accordance with the neighborhood meeting guidelines on November 21st, 2024, and July 22nd, 2025. No comments have been received by staff through the Durham Resoning Explorer on this case. The proposal is predominantly single-family. The proposal is consistent with 23 of 27 applicable comprehensive plan policies. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Sorry, I lost my place. At this time, the chair is opening the public hearing. May the applicant please come forward and present.
Thank you, Mr. Kane, for your presentation, and good evening, Chair Cameron, Vice Chair Shigeris, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Neil Goshen, attorney at the Morningstar Law Group at 700 West Main Street here in Durham, and I'm representing the owners of this property on the request for rezoning. To me, this is an interesting project because it's an infill project that I think is consistent with the spirit of the comprehensive plan. At almost seven dwelling units per acre, represents the densest development in the area. I know some people may view that as a bad thing, but the comprehensive plan is aimed at densifying within the urban growth boundary to stop proliferation and further sprawl. Now, this is not a huge project. It proposes a maximum of 120 units on about 18 acres of land. And this is a really efficient use of land, especially when you consider some of the significant proffers that they've made. First, they have limited the maximum impervious to no more than 38% of the site. They also have committed to limited impacts to the existing steep slopes on the site. There is another significant commitment, the importance of which might not be readily apparent. We have committed to no mass grading on the site, which means that this site will be developed in phases, where each phase deserves less than four acres at a time. What is important about that is that under the UDO, projects which do not utilize mass grading are not subject to tree coverage requirements. But, we have treated this project as though it were not exempt from tree coverage requirements, and in fact, we have committed to more tree cover than would be required in that scenario, required tree coverage limit. We also have made a significant contribution to DPS, considering that the project is calculated to result in only two additional students over the base zonings. I double-checked just in case, make sure that 60,000 contribution wasn't a typo. I checked with my client, it's not a typo. And they've committed to green building standards, they've committed to using native species, and they've committed to controlling the 100-year storm. They also have addressed the comments from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, having committed to multi-use path and raised crosswalks at the entrances. Also, they have a strong affordable housing commitment for a project of this size. They've committed to 10 affordable units in the project, and I want to point out that their commitment is not a percentage of the final units. It's 10 units regardless of how many units end up on the ultimate site plan. If they are able to achieve 120 units on the site plan, 10 units is more than 8% of the, of the overall units, which is more than most projects and definitely high for a project of this size. Based on the UDO requirements for PDR zoning, the site plan has to show at least 96 units overall, so 10 units out of 96 is over 10% of the units. Now, before I leave the lectern, I need to touch on the history of this project. While this is a brand-new application, evidently this project has been through the wringer. It was started initially by the same owners, I believe, but, but with a different attorney. The original project, I think, was submitted sometime, then I believe it went to council in October of 23. At that council meeting, the item was referred back to staff to work out a few kinks. The item came back to the council in January of 24, where the applicant asked for a continuance, and it was heard, it was taken up by council in February of 24, where the council sent it back to Planning Commission. It went back to Planning Commission in April, but there was some miscommunication. The applicant was not present at that meeting, and sometime after that, the application expired due to inactivity. Now, I'm not here to speculate on why any of that happened. I was not involved in the project at the time. I simply do not know. But, at one of the neighborhood meetings, neighbors brought up that at the last council meeting, the previous attorney for the project committed to no blasting. I was caught off guard by that. It was surprising to me, but I told the neighbors I'd followed up with the team about it, and I did. It is true that the previous attorney made a commitment to no blasting, but of course, council never voted on that. On, on, yeah, they never voted on that or on the project with that commitment. Now, there is a key difference between the project now and the project then, and it's that since then, we have acquired the one-foot strip, that parcel that was mentioned that goes along the north and along the south, north and the east. And that, that parcel previously blocked our access to existing Chadwick Drive. Now that the project includes that strip, we have frontage on Chadwick and we're required by the UDO to make that connection. So the current version of the project is improved with this connection, but the infrastructure requirements make that, the infrastructure requirements to make that connection are exactly the type of thing that gives us pause about committing no blasting. Because the layout of the land, that area will be the lowest side, so that's where the sewer will be the deepest. Which means that that connection is exactly where we have to dig the deepest. It is possible we may hit rock. We're hopeful that we will not, but because of that, we're not in a position to make that same commitment. I felt it was important to state that on the record because I told the neighbors that I would look into it with the team and encourage them to make the commitment again. But I think you've heard where we're at. The project is slightly different, definitely better, but different enough that it would be unwise for us to make the commitment this time around. We just don't have enough information about whether we will hit rock, and we don't want to make a commitment that we don't know we can keep. I hate to end on that note, but I owe it to the. I hate to end on that note, but I owed it to the neighbors to highlight that. That does not change the fact that this is a very well-thought-out infill project with significant environmental commitments and contributions to both DPS and affordable housing.
All right, now we will have members from the community come up. First, we have Pamela, Pam Williams. Okay, you're just gonna, you know the drill. Right. Awesome. Okay. Just don't forget to speak into the mic. Make sure you move that thing there around so everybody can hear you.
Erin, I don't see it up here. Oh, wait a minute, I do. Okay. Yeah, I think so. This thing is short. Okay, okay.
Thank you. My name is Wanda Allen. I live at twenty-one eleven Rodeo Road in Durham. I'd like for you to look at this photo here. Take a, take a look at the slide, look at the photo. The residents are already experiencing flooding from the development over there on Carpenter Road. We are asking this developer, it's a must that they make environmental commitments. We, as taxpayers, cannot keep carrying the burden of cleaning up the lakes and streams. In fiscal year twenty-four, the taxpayers paid over seventy-three, seventy-nine point three million dollars. We're asking the developer to sample the water released from the temporary construction ponds before they're released into the creek and the river. So what's happening now, they're automatically releasing the water out of these temporary ponds, and they got turbidity in it. And this is a law that they're doing in Virginia, and it's the best EPA practice, so they can do it here in North Carolina. We're asking that the hundred-year permanent and temporary basins be done. And so the temporary pond can also, is where we're having major problems. We're asking that the stream buffers be a hundred-foot undisturbed natural buffers for the federally protected species and our wildlife. Tree preservation, preserve over thirty percent per phase of the development. Avoid clear cutting to, to the edge. Minimum of thirty-foot buffers with a zero-point opacity. And, you know, most importantly, no variance or waivers on the tax commitment. Because what's happening is the developers are coming back and saying, "Oh, we need to get a variance. We need to get into the wetlands." And we are asking that we want no blasting. There's over a hundred and fifty homes at risk. So basically, a development is supposed to bring enhancement to a community, not to destroy the community.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Pam Williams. Tree preservation, yes, they're planning on giving twenty point five tree preservation, but the trees in the stream buffers is over three acres, almost four acres, just the trees in there. So really, it's, they're not giving anything anywhere else in the community. We are asking for a commitment of thirty percent tree preservation. We also ask, as Wanda said, no variances in everything. We think tree preservation is critical, and it should be included in each and every phase. Buffer bounders, yes, he's, they mentioned that they're masquerading, so no buffer, buffer boundaries are required. We, these people lived out here in this community for, ever since two thousand and five, when the last zoning was done. It is still zoned residential rural, and that's what they bought their property for. They was expecting high density of six point nine dwellings per acre. The least they can do is provide a thirty-foot buffer around the property with O-six opacity. One tree every hundred foot around this property is not adequate. Ten-foot buffers, do we want this in that neighborhood? No, it is not the character of the neighborhood. We need it to be, be trees and privacy for the families and the people around who bought and, and have been living there with two acres, I mean, two dwellings per acre. This is not within the character. Commit it to undisturbed stream buffers. If it's not undisturbed, then they can cut seventy feet of the, of the hundred feet. And in that seventy feet, they can provide degrading sediment ponds, retaining walls, sewer easement, drainage ditch, hundred-foot buffer. So we're asking for undisturbed stream buffers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Cameron, Vice Chair, and Planning Commission staff. My name is Gary McLean. I live at forty-seven twelve Jimmy Rogers Road in Durham, lifelong resident, about two, two miles from where this development is going to be. Want to talk about flooding. The neighbors already suffer from flooding issues in the area due to mass grading and cutting all of the trees down. Additional, addition of seventeen point three eighty-one acres cleared and direct discharge from impervious surfaces will increase the flooding problems. So residents' house on Burton Road and flooding, well, flooding over Drive after Carpenter Falls construction was started. That's the center picture. We also would require a hundred-year stormwater basins for permanent and temporary, but the temporary basins are causing issues because the, the muddy water, the turbidity, and the sedimentation going into Falls Lake, we're just continuously having this problem. And I know we've been up here before, and I know y'all have heard the, the, the talk about the tomato soup that's going into the Falls Lake. It should be, I mean, we keep going over and over and over this thing, you know, so. But the next thing is commit to no blasting. Blasting does cause wells damage, permit violations, home damage, foundation damage, and groundwater damage. Someone, someone, Durham County residents was pleading for city water over on Junction Road, which is probably about four miles from this area. If blasting occurs, over a hundred and fifty homes are at risk, and we have no recourse. They, this is based on several residents who hired structural engineers to assess the damage, to determine if blasting caused it. And the reason, the answer was blasting definitely caused the damage. Blasting has affected the underground aquifers, causing the...
Thank you.
Can I finish my sentence?
Finish your sentence, yes.
Causing underground aquifers, causing the residents to lose drinking water. They have to pay to have new drills sunk or whatever, and sometimes they try to get onto the city water, but this doesn't always work. And picture yourself if you don't have any water. That's an essential thing that we have all got to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the audience that would like to speak? All right, we're moving on to the Zoom. First, we have Penny Mays. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Ms. Mays, are you ready?
Yes, can you hear?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Penny Mays. I live at thirty-six twenty-two Gooch Road in Durham, and I'd like to address the concerns about traffic. I can refer you to slide nine, slide ten on the Preserve Rural Durham in the PDFs. I'd also like to point out that there's no proposed infrastructure for improvements in this area. Currently, with traffic is increasing on the Burton Road and Cheek Road area, and I live right, right down the street from that on Gooch, and at this intersection of Gear and Red Mill Road, we're having increased traffic, particularly in the mornings and in the late afternoons. Traffic backs up on eighty-five in that area, and in the mornings, it backs up on Gear Street. This is, this is just going to add more traffic to the area. And so I'd like to know what the developer is planning to do about traffic except for the left-turn lanes that are in the proposed development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Angelo Birch, Senior.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to the commission. Most of what I wanted to say has been said, and I'm hoping to appeal to your common sense. I'm hoping that you do not push this thing forward, especially with the annexation. As it is, and you all know well, the city doesn't have capacity to take care of what it has now. Annexing our area to increase to the city, taking it out of the county hand, does not help anyone but the developers. I did not move out of the city to be annexed into the city. I enjoy being under the county. I enjoy being away from the city. I don't understand why the county, why this commission is even considering, because when developers know they're in the county, and then all of a sudden, even if back when talks were going on, you want to move into the county, but now you want it to be controlled by the city. You knew you were building in the county when you came here. Those of us that moved out of the city, we did it for a purpose. Now to be introduced back or annexed into the city, no. And I'm praying and hoping that you will not push this forward. And the sixty thousand dollars to our school? Anybody knows better than that. What is that going to do for Durham Public Schools? I noticed on the application, they said no wildlife corridor. I guess they don't consider deers to be wildlife or any other animals, because we see them out here, and they will be disrupted, as well as our community. Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope you all understand that we do not want this. Thank you for your time, ma'am.
Thank you. Donna Stainbeck.
Good Stainbeck, Rogers Road. I'm about two miles from this development. I'm a lifelong resident of this community. Right now, we are experiencing significant amount of development growth in southeast Durham. In the watersheds for Lit Creek, Little Lit Creek, and Briar Creek, and Panther Creek, we've had from twenty twenty to now, over twenty thousand and fifty-four new dwellings approved with additional population of forty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-five. And that has increased our vehicles per day to one, one hundred and fifty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-five. We've got new developments pending that will bring the total dwellings to twenty-two three seventy-four, and will increase the population to fifty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-one. That's near the size of Rocky Mount, right here in just southeast Durham. And that increases the vehicles per day to one hundred and seventy, seventy-three thousand. We, this is going on while we are considering a lack of infrastructure in this area for fire, EMS, call centers, police, sheriffs, medical and hospitals, the lack of emergency staff and facilities, school capacity and transportation, roadways, local and interstate. You know, this has got county roads that are maintained by the state with little shoulders. Electrical grids are strained. I got a, a letter from Wake saying that they're going to be working on helping to alleviate this problem, but they recognize it's a big issue for existing customers. And this project is not car, it is car-centric, excuse me, in a non-continuous area. It's not within a fifteen-minute walking distance of stores, jobs, and just, and businesses. There is, um, it's not within the existing community character. It has no business in schools within two to five miles. It's not near a transit route. It's over two point four miles west. No dwelling sidewalks or bike lanes is in the vicinity along Burton or Cheek Road. This is urban sprawl.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stainbeck.
And we did a blow up, and there are no parts anywhere. Thank you.
Next, we have Vicki King.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Vicki King. I live at twenty-five seventeen Artsley Drive, which is very close to where Sage Brook is proposed. According to what I've read, there will be blasting on this site with no recourse to current homeowners in the area along Cheek Road, Burton Road, Dinsmore, Barwick, and Artsley. How can that be allowed? Most of the folks in this neighborhood have been here for well than, well over ten years. What will the builder do to alleviate flooding caused by the impervious surfaces? There's no curb and gutter in this neighborhood. I have witnessed flooding at Dinsmore and Burton. That's not the creek. That's Dinsmore and Burton. What will be done about keeping it from happening? What's the plan for the added traffic to Burton, to Dinsmore? There'll be people coming down Barwick Drive and Artsley Drive to cut over to get into this development. How's that going to be alleviated? There's no public transportation out here. There's no grocery stores. There's no infrastructure at all. Please do not allow this property to be further developed or annexed into the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristy Girkin? Girkin?
Hey, my name is Kristy Girkin. I am a resident of twenty-five sixty-three Chadwick Place. I'm three houses down from the end of Chadwick, where this potential blasting would occur, which I just learned today would be a possibility. So I'm very concerned about the infrastructure of my home, should that happen. Things, I want to stress the importance of the infrastructure. If you have not been in this area in, in a car in the mornings, in the afternoons, you would not know the, the amount of traffic that is backed up at the intersection of Cheek and Burton. The, the front entrance to this development would be not even a quarter of a mile down Burton Road from Cheek Road and that intersection. It would be nearly impossible for people who lived in that development to get out onto Burton Road. That would force them down Chadwick. Chadwick is a narrow, dead-end street. It is not designed for the traffic impact that would, that would happen. As Vicki just stated, you know, people would be cutting through here in order to get out Dinsmore to Burton or up to Cheek Road via Artsley or Barwick. The other thing with department in this area, there's no plans for infrastructure updates. And with the developments already going on around here, and another proposed one larger down the street, it's, this area just cannot handle it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the Zoom that would like to speak? I think Sarah Thielen, you were giving comments last, thank you, raised your hand. All right, next we have Pamela Andrews.
Good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Pamela Andrews. I live at Wake First Highway. Good evening, everyone. There are environmental commitments that need to be made before approving this parcel. Everyone, there are environmental commitments that need to be made before approving this parcel. As so, establish strict environmental monitoring like is done in Virginia, which is the best, the best management practice of the EPA, but needs to test the affluent to assure runoff is not temporary basins. The flooding after rainfalls allows the turbidity, tomato soup, to travel down into Panther Creek, which will be impacted by this runoff greatly. There needs to be maintained a hundred-foot undisturbed stream buffer, as Pam Williams explained, which is federally protected species and to protect our wildlife. We have lost over... We have lost over 5,000 acres of forest in southeast Durham alone. We have been in contact with the NC Wildlife Commission, who has informed us of the following. It is illegal to relocate many wildlife species in North Carolina, including those that are in the carnivore family, coyotes, foxes, raccoons, skunks, et cetera. This is not a viable possibility. When these species have been trapped and causing property damage, they will either be humanly euthanized or released on the same property where they have been captured. Cow mortality rates occur when these wildlife are removed from their home territory with a low chance of survival. No variances or waivers on these text commitments should be allowed, as already mentioned. The tree preservation at 30% has been mentioned. Development going up by 0.5% to get an exceeding, the tree preservation is a got-to-be-a-joke. The neighbors deserve more than a zero or a .2 opacity buffer. A minimum of 30-foot buffer with .6 opacity should be put into place, allowing trees as a barrier. The wetlands, we have to protect our wetlands with our natural sponges to reduce this runoff. Not let four be impacted.
Thank you.
No glaciers should be proffered, as has already been said. Thank you all for allowing me to speak. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Thielen.
Hi, this is Sarah Thielen from 1105 Dock Nichols Road, Durham, North Carolina. So, so sorry about earlier. So I wanted to talk a little bit more about the impact, the proffered impact to the education system, fire, and EMS, and curious where folks feel like those folks are going to live in this part of Durham. The median salary for a firefighter is $66,000. The median salary for a teacher is a little over $56,000. And the Durham, the average Durham home price is $434,000. $100,000. So just, that would be over 47%, between 47 and 55% of monthly salary for those folks. Affordable townhome options offered by folks here today would allow those very people to live close to where they work. I think a larger question for the commission at large is what, what does Durham want to be? A welcoming place or a fearful one? There are projects that have been waiting for approval for two and a half, three years, still not approved. There are people that are still waiting for housing, still getting priced out of their own neighborhoods with nowhere affordable to go. I personally know the sting of change, because our house is on Dock Nichols Road, one of the original houses, not the new, the new developments. And it went from a darn near dirt road to, in a quiet little place, we brought our first born, secondborn home to, but, and built our little farm, to smooth blacktop sidewalks, busy place, lots of new neighbors, place for kids to go trick-or-treating, and just a ton of development. Not all change, fear of change, I think, is we can't be afraid of the inevitable change for less sprawl, more people on less land.
Thank you.
And more land saved for trees. Thank you.
Len, wishing to speak. Please use the raise-your-hand feature. Would the applicant like to address any of the questions or concerns that the community had?
Yeah, secret, a couple things I want to touch on. A couple things about tree preservation and tree cover on this site. And I want to be clear, we've committed to no mask grading. Under the UDO, if you don't have mask grading, you don't have tree cover requirements. So the tree cover requirement on this property is zero. So we're not 0.5% over the tree cover requirement, we're 20.5% over the tree cover requirement. It is correct that a lot of that is in the stream buffer, that significantly more than what is required. It was hard for me to hear the folks online, I don't know if it was for you guys, it was quite quiet, but I think someone mentioned something about wildlife, displacement of wildlife, and it was unclear to me if they were referring to any specific, like endangered species. We're not aware of that, and if that does come up, then I would agree with the speaker that if there is endangered species, I mean, that's, we're going to have to deal with that. But we're, to date, we're not aware of anything like that. The environmental commitments on this project, in my opinion, are actually what make it a, you know, very attractive project. They have limited the impervious significantly to, I think it's 38%. They've limited the impacts of steep slopes beyond what the UDO would require, allow, I should say. They've agreed to handling the 100-year storm. I mean, these are the things that we heard them asking for over and over, and we already committed to them. So I was a little bit confused by some of the feedback. Also, I mean, I've been, you guys have seen me plenty, I think you've seen some of these neighbors plenty as well. This is a project that has committed to no mask grading, and yet, which is something that folks have been asking for, this project commits to, and yet, it's not enough. And this is a small project, it's on 18 acres, less than 18 acres. Some of the projects they're talking about are, you know, are very large, clearing, you know, talking about developing 100 acres, that type of thing. That's not what this project is. This is a small infill project with strong, robust environmental commitments. It's a little bit confusing to me, because we actually have done many of the things that they have asked for on this project in their presentation today, but also just generally on projects in south, in this section of Durham, you know, for the past years. This project is doing a lot of those things. And so I, I'm honestly, you know, a little disappointed that that hasn't been acknowledged. I recognize that the project may not be perfect, I get that. There were some suggestions made that our team will be willing to look into. For example, we have committed to handling the 100-year on the permanent, and I think it was suggested that we should be looking at doing 100-year on the temporary. Just in a brief conversation here, that's something we'll look into. I can't make the commitment tonight, the calculation evidently is a little different, because the commentary just isn't paying attention to what's in the application. We have done more tree preservation, we have done, we have limited the impervious, it's from the entrance from Burton Road, but we're not technically crossing the stream up by Chadwick, but we would be impacting the stream buffer at Chadwick for any, and that's true of any development on this property, not just this one. Even if it was by right development, it would be impacting the stream. Thank you.
I think the wildlife thing was about deer. That's what I heard, that there is a lot of deer there, and there was no consideration of deer. Okay. Public hearing is now closed, and we're open for Commissioner discussion and questions. Commissioner Montez?
Yeah, I have a few things. Moving forward, I think, for me, I'm going to talk about the good things real quick, just to highlight that, you know, there's great things that I'm seeing here. For one, it's incredibly hard, well, it's very hard to achieve a 100-year storm, and I, as a developer, I know it goes a long ways. I think public, you know, made it clear that that's what they wanted, so the project brought that. I'm happy to see that. There was, I just want to clarify for the public, I heard one of the concerns was that there was going to be no curb and gutter. I'm pretty sure the cross-sections are going to have full storm infrastructure. And this is a question for staff that maybe Erin, you could answer, is the report says that the site is only expected to produce two and a half students, yet, how is that? How do we come up with that number, just so I am familiar with it?
Sure. So we get the student generation numbers from Durham Public Schools, and the formula they use takes two things into account. One, the area of the county that it's in. The DPS splits the county up into five different areas, and it tracks student generation rate by those districts, for lack of a better term. It also looks at the housing type, whether it's single-family, apartment, townhouse, and so forth. And historically, townhouses have not the vast, the highest student generation rate comes from single-family homes. So when you have an area that can only generate, say, 40 single-family homes, based on historical data and trends, that is going to give you about the same number of students as you get out of 120 townhouses, and that's why you're seeing that. Student generation differential so small here, because we historically have seen low student generation rates out of townhouses. For whatever reason that is, that's just how it's worked out. Those numbers and those formulas are updated on an annual basis with DPS, and we're coming up on that soon. Hopefully about, by the end of this month, we'll have new numbers and new formulas, maybe by early next month.
Great. So, I mean, it sounds like we're on the right track with that. And, I mean, the fact that the applicant's willing to put in $60,000 to the DPS system, to me, is, again, a big plus. I do want to ask, there is no mask grading, although the site is considerably small. I mean, it's not huge. So I would think that, you know, if we are committing to no mask grading, that we're going to do this in a phased-out process. And considering, could you just speak on that a little bit? So everybody's clear is, you know, it's very easy to say that we're not going to do mask grading, but doing it is a whole different thing. When we balance the site, it is, it is a challenge. We have to move clear on the bottom side, you know, and nobody wants to buy dirt and bring it in or haul out. So what is, what is the current strategy to balance the site, clear it without mask grading?
Yeah, this is a great question. So this is something that we looked at pretty extensively, so that we would be able to make this commitment? We, I mean, so generally, yes, it'll be done in phases, and generally speaking, you know, the goal is to keep each phase under four acres, so that we're not masquading it, you know, ever. And you can't move to the next, you can't pull the next land disturbance permit until you have stabilization in the first phase. So in order to do that, what Thames Group did, I would say stormwater, road infrastructure, is all going to be upfront. That's essentially phase one.
Right.
Right? And then, once that's stabilized, then they can start doing some of the, I guess, vertical construction areas. And I think the overall site's like 18 acres. We're at like, something like seven acres of land disturbance, something like that overall. So, you know, it's not, again, it's not, we're going to be able to do this, we feel pretty confident without mask grading. That's why we made the commitment, and especially because for a long time, that has been something that has had folks quite concerned in this area, is all of those, quite concerned in this area, is all of the grading goes on at once. Well, this is less than four acres at a time.
Yep. Thank you. Your SEM is close to there, there are some exceptions to that. And the fact that the applicant is going for 30, you have up to 70%, am I correct? And you're going up to 38, is, that seems great to me. The only thing I would, you know, advise, if we are, I understand there's some grading walls that may happen there, if we could do that, that's very important for the public as I see storm, we're going to be controlling the peak flow out.
Is this a new, a new comment?
It is, I'm sorry. I just want to kind of point out that with the 100-year storm, you guys are reducing the flow less than what it is now to those creeks. Is that right? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Wohl?
Thank you. So one of the concerns I heard was the buffer between the project and the neighbors. I was wondering what, if you can address those concerns?
Yeah, so we had two neighborhood meetings, and we actually didn't get that concern from any neighbors that I'm aware of. I did hear some folks speaking today, but if I understood the addresses correctly from the speakers, none of them actually are adjacent that requested additional buffers like that. We had planned this with, well, I would say, UDO required buffers, which in this case is, I believe it's zero in every place. That's the way we had planned this. And, well, yeah, I mean, I guess that answers your question. Oh, and just perimeter buffers. I mean, there's still the riparian buffer, yeah.
Commissioner, are you done? Okay, Commissioner Klopak.
Thank you, Chair. So I understand with the no mask grading, that you have a 0% requirement for tree cover, and you're doing 20.5%. I'm curious about the question about where those trees are located. Would you have had reason for 20.5%? Or is that just kind of, or is that just kind of by default?
A lot of our tree cover is going to end up in the riparian buffer. I don't, I couldn't tell you the exact number, but with the commitment we're at, we do anticipate having, additionally, there are impacts that are allowed in the riparian buffer. I think one of the speakers mentioned it, and Commissioner Montez was talking about it, with, when it's like stormwater infrastructure, but also the stream crossings are going through the riparian buffers. So, I mean, there are ways to impact trees in the stream buffer. That's not what we're.
Yeah, and I get like, when we look at those percentages, it's compared to what's required in the UDO. I think it's also important to always remember what it is compared to what it is now, and what that loss is. And it's not just you, it's just generally how we talk about and think about trees in this forum. I mean, what would be the trade-offs? Like, you know, is it possible to hit that 30% either on roadsides or other parts of the property? Like, what would it take to get there, and what would be the trade-offs you'd face by hitting a higher number?
I'm sorry, to hit a higher number on tree cover?
Yeah, yeah, the 30% that was suggested. Like, what would it take to be able to deliver that?
Well, I think, you're saying 30% overall, 30% per phase?
30% overall, because instead of.
As I mentioned earlier, I believe, you know, the disturbed area is something like seven acres, so, I'm sorry, the built-upon area is something like seven acres. So the disturbed area is going to be something greater than that, if you did 30% tree cover. And I, I just don't, I can't do all this math in my head, right? But there's additional areas that, basically, I'm saying, we're probably grading areas, or grading, or doing some sort of land disturbance in areas that would need to become tree cover if we went to 30%. But the ultimate build-upon area is still only like seven acres, right? So it would essentially be trying to fit that in with less grading, and I'm not sure, I'm really not at all qualified to answer, if that's possible, even.
Do you design and go forward to see if it's possible to have a greater percentage?
Understood.
You good? Yeah, and there was just a question from community folks about this additional testing. You know, is that something that would be more at the level of like, city policy versus individual applications around, like water testing?
Right. I think we would depend on like, what kind of testing we're talking about. Are we talking about for turbidity? Are we talking about for rate? Are we talking about for volume? We'd need more specificity.
No, terminated? Is it? Okay, okay. Did you want me to speak on that? At least we got the response we need. Any other questions? Any? Commissioner Ritchie?
This is a question for staff, and this might just be my ignorance here, but it is concerning to me that this doesn't comply with Policy 165, because it's an annexation, but that doesn't really, hasn't come up in the staff report much. Does that suggest that there's not significant challenge to the city, because this is an annexation?
So as part of our routine review with other departments, such as solid waste and transportation and others, we, Policy 165 says this is a satellite annexation, so therefore policy says you should not do satellite annexations. They can cause issues, waste, water, sewer, and others. I'm not aware that any of those departments have raised that issue in this case. There are already, for example, water sewer services in the area, and we've not heard from environmental and street services that this is a particular issue yet regarding their services. So general, that are, the general policy is to not do this, but we haven't heard specific concerns.
Yeah. Let me, let me touch on that, let me also just touch on the last thing you talked about. This is a rather unique area in Durham, correctly. They're just, but they're not annexed. So this is, this is a kind of a strange location. The reason I know that is because I represented the property owner at the end of Ardsley, I think it's 2717 Ardsley, who was the last house to be built on Ardsley, and wanted to connect the city sewer and water without annexing, and they were given the exception because this is a strange place in Durham. So I agree that this is a satellite annexation, but the services are in place there already for a number of reasons, you know, historic reasons. The city water and sewer is already there. This isn't like, they're having to bring city and water, city water sewer from like three miles away. It's there. And people who are living in the county are benefiting from it without being in the city. So, you know, it's a little bit strange. As far as why they're not public, so this just has to do straight with liability. As far as why they're not public, so this just has to do straight with liability. Right, so the HOA, this is going to be the amenity space for the HOA. If the HOA opens it up to the public, just for general use by the public, the HOA has to maintain it. The HOA also would be liable for it. In other conversations I have, not on this project specifically, but in other conversations I have with the city, you know, it's a question of is the city going to take on the liability for that? And generally, I think the answer has been no on, on such a small development. So there are some communities that can have like a five-acre, you know, call it rec center or something like that, where there might be more of an ability or appetite for the city to take on that as a public amenity. But I, just in general, I, I think it's kind of unwise and maybe unfair to ask a small HOA to take on the liability for inviting the public to come generally at, on their playground or whatever if someone gets hurt. I mean, that goes right to the HOA, which is just the homeowners.
Commissioner Shigeris? Vice Chair Shigeris?
Yes, I have a, so about the blasting and the 150-some-odd residents who may be affected by it. So you're saying that these people already have city water and sewer? And so they're not on wells? And so if there is blasting required and there is damage that's done, then the city is going to have to fix their own problem?
I think we heard from some folks who said they are on, on well and septic. I was talking about Ardsley specifically, which is right, you know, near this site. I, and so I can't speak to, there very well may be some folks in the area that are on well and septic, I don't know. But on Ardsley, it's city water. And I, I would tend to agree with your statement. If there were impacts to the city, public infrastructure, it would fall to the city and likely the developer who damaged it for, through blasting. If that's what actually ends up happening, yeah, I mean, it wouldn't, it would.
Anyone else? No? Second time around, Commissioner Montez?
Yeah, just one last thing. Because, because you guys are committing to no mass grading, does that mean that you guys are committing to no buffers around the perimeter?
Well, the UDO doesn't require.
Yeah, I understand the UDO doesn't require it.
Masquerading buffers, if you're not masquerading. And in this case, it wouldn't require perimeter buffers because we're residential against residential.
Right. I would just sit her, even a small 10-foot, 5-foot, 10-foot buffer. Just because, I mean, imagine being a single-family house. You're just kind of looking over to a taller two or three-story townhouse.
We'll be looking into along with whether we can do more tree cover and if we can also be more specific about the riparian buffer protections.
Any, any questions? Are we ready to move this case forward? One has access to their email right now. Just emailed everyone a script. Oh, sorry. You want to do it? All right, go ahead.
Chair, regarding case Z2400040, I move that we forward this case to City Council with a favorable recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner, oh my God, I'm blanking out. Please.
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
By Chair Shigeris.
No.
Commissioner Bailey.
No.
Commissioner Capers.
No.
Commissioner Chikowski.
No.
Commissioner Hunter. Just, just to be clear, because there was no excused absence for Commissioner Hunter. To be clear, because there was no excused absence for Commissioner Hunter, she is by, by rule, rule, a yes.
No.
Commissioner Ritchie.
No.
Commissioner Woke.
No.
The motion fails eight to three.
Thank you. We are at 7:32. It is time to take our break. Let's come back at 7:42. 10 minutes. We are calling the meeting back to order. I have 4001 East Gear Towns, East Gear Towns. May we have the staff report, please?
Hi, good evening, Chair Cameron, Vice Chair Shigeris and Planning Commissioners. I'm Peyton Burgess, and I'm here tonight to present Z250001 East Gear Towns. The rezoning request is for 3.3 residential, 6.573 to accommodate up to 22 townhouses. Again, the existing zoning is residential rural and residential suburban 20, and the proposed zoning is planned development residential 6.573. The site is immediately surrounded by residential rural, residential suburban 20, residential suburban 10 and PDR 3.360 zoning districts. Full without the use of stairs, meeting Energy Star standards, electric vehicle charging stations with every unit, a concrete pad bus shelter to Go Durham standards, 10-foot shared use path, cutoff lighting, native. The proposal is consistent with the apartment and townhouse neighborhood place type by adding townhouses to a predominantly single-family area, and the proposal is consistent with 17 of 21 applicable comprehensive plan policies. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you. At this time, will we have the applicant come forward? I'm sorry, at this time, the chair is opening the public hearing and the applicant is coming forward. I didn't see, I didn't say that last.
And thank you, Ms. Burgess, for the presentation. Good evening once again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Neil Gosh, attorney with the Morning Star on the request for rezoning. This is another infill project, but it is quite different in scope. At about 6.5 dwellings per acre, it's a similar density, density to the last project, but it is on only 3.35 acres for a total of 22 townhouses. I want to tell you a little bit about client here, my client. They're a small team that generally has done home rehabs. I think they're about four people in that company. And as I understand it, this is their first venture into a new subdivision. They've been working with the folks at PAPS Design to put together a well-thought-out concept. They want to showcase their commitment to doing it right. So they've made some strong commitments on this project based on other development projects that they've reviewed in Durham. For starters, on this small project, they've committed to handling the 100-year storm event. As you might expect, that comes at a significant cost of space on such a small piece of property, but they felt it was the right thing to do. They also have committed to some green building techniques, like EV chargers and Energy Star specs. And they've committed to reducing their impervious to 65% and using native plant species. Additionally, they've made an effort here to contribute to connectivity. They have committed to a 10-foot wide multi-use path across their frontage, and they have committed to providing a bus stop if Go Durham wants it along their frontage. This, this site is along an active bus line. And here again, I think they've got a pretty strong commitment to DPS this project, and they've committed to contributing $5,000 to DPS. But I will say, because of the size of the project, they really couldn't find a way to ensure affordable units in the project. So they have instead made a strong commitment at $20,000 to the dedicated housing. You know, I would say like the last project, and in fact, in this case, maybe even more so. This is the type of small-scale infill development that, when done right, is going to contribute meaningfully to bringing the ultimate vision of the comprehensive plan to fruition. When we can densify within the urban growth boundary, and in this case in particular, in areas that are already within the city limits, we make better use of our existing infrastructure and which further stems the tide of suburban sprawl. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on this project tonight. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience in person today that would like to speak on this case? We don't have anyone pre-signed up. Going once, going twice. All right, I see there is one hand raised on the Zoom. We have Madeline Brady. Please state your name and address, and then your comments.
Hi, yeah, my name is Madeline Brady. I live at 1913 Milan Street. We are just diagonal from the proposed construction there. We do have a number of concerns, and I'm speaking on behalf of me and my three neighbors. We all share a driveway right off of East Gear, even though technically we live on Milan. And our home, right across from us, there's new construction starting, which would be three homes, and this would be right alongside those three homes. Our concern is just with the amount of traffic that this is adding right here. So right where we live and where this proposed development is, is coming downhill on East Gear. And if anybody's familiar with this very particular spot where construction is proposed, it's really high-speed traffic that comes down this road, really dangerous. We just really recently. We just really recently, last month, six weeks ago, had a serious car accident right here when you try to turn onto Gear Street. It is, like cars come flying, by the time you've like straightened out your car, you've nearly been T-boned and so I am concerned about more and more driveways coming out right here, more and more car accidents happening right here. So primarily traffic is a huge concern of ours and then this construction is right behind, or be in front of I guess 85 depending on how you look at it, so we are concerned about more noise and light in our neighborhood. Also, this is area that has had a lot of wildlife. We are also concerned about, you know, with that wildlife getting forced out of that area becomes an even bigger traffic concern about a half a mile from this project and that will bring a lot of traffic to our area that we really haven't seen yet.
Thank you Ms. Brady, your time is up. Next, we have Victoria Mazur. Mazur, Mazur? Go ahead, she's muted still.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, thank you, good evening Chair, Vice Chairs and Commissioners. My name is Victoria Mazur at 2 Christopher Court, I live in Milan Woods, which is off of East Gear Street, sort of tucked in. We're actually around the corner from 210 townhomes that are still being built three summers later, so I do feel for our neighbors. I'm undecided on this proposal, but there are some aspects that I actually want to draw your attention to that I think are beneficial. I agree with the previous caller on a lot of the traffic concerns, but I'm going to just speak to the things that I'm in favor of. One of them is the full cutoff lighting. We are in fall migration season for birds now and the City of Durham and the County Board of Commissioners are in support of lights out and so this full cutoff lighting is beneficial to that migration, although as the other commenter said, clear cutting all the way through possibly to 85, that would be a concern. But the text commitment of the full cutoff lighting is favorable, in my opinion. I'm also in favor of the 10-foot wide multi-use path. This, this road is in between two bus stops for go Durham Route 3. The bus stop at East Gear at Midland Terrace, to East Gear at Landon Farms is a 19-minute walk and this would sort of be in the middle of that. It's a dangerous, I wouldn't even call it a shoulder on East Gear Street here, so having something for pedestrians and bike riders, even though this would sort of be patchwork and there's nothing it would connect to, it's a good start. I like the concrete pad and bus shelter commitment. I would prefer the bus shelter to the pad because at Landon Farms, those do have proper shelters, but the other, the other bus stop is just, it's in the weeds and I've literally called the City of Durham to ask them to mow because women are waiting in the weeds. It's very bizarre. So a proper bus shelter is preferable to a pad, thank you. And then finally, I am concerned about.
Thank you, your time is up.
Dang.
Sorry. Next, we have Sarah Thielin.
Thank you, thank you Madam Chairman. I am Sarah Thielin at 1105 Doc Nichols Road in Durham. I spoke earlier and I wanted to bring, bring it home one more time on the record. There are 39 households a day moving into Durham, according to DataWorks NC. So the, the sprawl that is, that is kind of consuming this part of Durham is, is why we need to, to consider and I think prioritize higher-density housing projects like townhomes. With more people on less land, more land can be saved for trees and farms and green space that we've, that we are so happy to talk about. I think it's an important point to make that, that these.
I got mine. Do you want to talk into this one?
Oh, sorry. Apologies, I'm so sorry. I think my audio cut out there for a moment. All that to say, I do think it's important that we prioritize higher-density housing projects like, like, like these townhomes. That's all, thank you.
My microphone is out, the one next to me as well. Are, is there any, there, I think everyone on the Zoom, I see that, that is on still as attendees all have spoken and there is no one else in the gallery here, so I am going to close the public hearing at this time and we are now open for Commissioner discussion and questions. Commissioner Montez.
I think I just have two things here, it's a pretty straightforward deal here, but considering it's townhomes again, I, I would just ask the applicant to consider some project. I know that you don't have to have any project boundary or buffers, perimeter buffers around the site. I understand that, I would, I would ask, just even a five-foot, 10-foot buffer, not, not a lot to ask for there, but simply having single families around the, the development in appreciation of the, your neighbors to, to hopefully create some kind of buffering there. And I think townhome residents would also appreciate that. The other, only other thing, I know this wouldn't show the development plan, it's a text case, but there is, right across the street, oh, I have the wrong one, right across the street, there is road Cambian Place. So slight concern there with where your entrance would be, hopefully it's right across the street from Cambian directly across. I know, I kind of, kind of, kind of see that it's on the right side of the development, so it could potentially hinder some development on the east side there, so I'd understand that, but you know, just analyze to hopefully create a safe intersection there.
Yes, so just to touch on that, in our preliminary discussions with NCDOT, they have indicated that our entrance would need to be directly opposite the street you mentioned, Cambria. And that, so you're correct, that does kind of pinch that side of the development. It also, just for what it's worth, that's where the wetlands come in, so because of where the road has to align, we're going to have to impact the wetlands in that area.
Understood, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Copac, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wolk and Commissioner Copac.
Hey, so I think you just briefly mentioned what I was going to ask about, sorry, I'm having trouble with our microphones. So you're, the open space is not, you're not committing it to it in the most environmentally sensitive area and so that's what, you're just saying you're going to have to affect the wetland there?
Yeah, so I actually think that's something that we can, we can look into because, because of where the road comes in, it's going to, at least because of where we understand the road preliminary to have to come in, which is directly opposite Cambria, it's going to impact wetlands because that's where the wetlands are. But there are wetlands to the east of that, that I believe would probably end up being adjacent and part of our open space. So I, I actually intend to talk to our engineering team about that to see if we can actually make a commitment that our open space would include that area. That is not to say we won't impact wetlands because like I said, the road, as I understand, is going to impact the wetland, but not all of it. There, there will still be some remaining wetland that I think would, I mean, to my eye, which I'm not an engineer, right, but to my eye, that just seems like the appropriate place for open space anyway, because it is too, it's kind of too tight to develop for like a meaningful townhome or something like that, so it should probably end up being open space, which would be exactly adjacent to the environmental area. So I think it's a great question, I was thinking about that today as well.
Thank you, and there are, I really like a lot of the environmental commitments that you have particularly, the, the cutoff lights and the EV chargers. I'm always going to ask if you can commit to more tree coverage beyond the minimum requirement, because that is a comprehensive plan policy and something we like to see.
So I, I'm going to say I think the answer is probably yes, I need to check with the engineering team and it's probably going to end up in that wetland, it'd be more than what's required in the UDO, just for what it's worth. I suspect we're going to have tree coverage on this development, but I'll need to check with our engineering team because there are dimensional requirements for it to be called tree coverage under the UDO. If we meet them, then I, I mean, we might as well make the commitment because it's going to be there anyway.
Thank you. Commissioner Copac.
Yeah, I mean Commissioner Wolk touched on my question, so I'll just say that I want to appreciate that this and the last project both had Energy Star. I don't think we see a lot or enough of energy affordability in the cases that come forward or generally, and so I just want to say I'm glad to see those commitments in there.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments, questions? Are we ready to move this case forward? If so, may I have a motion? Who's going to read the script this time?
Chair regarding case Z 250001, I move that we afford this case to City Council with a favorable recommendation for approval.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Chakowski and seconded by Vice Chair Shigeris to move case Z 25001 East Gear Townhomes forward to City Council with a favorable, favorable recommendation. May I have the roll call vote, please?
Chair Cameron.
Yes.
Vice Chair Shigeris.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes.
Commissioner, no, Commissioner Copac.
Yes.
Commissioner Montez.
Yes.
Commissioner Neinkircher.
No.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes.
Commissioner Wolk.
Yes.
The motion passes 10 to 1.
Thank you. Thank you. We are now moving on to our new business for the day and that is election of officers. The Planning Commission, Commissioners elect a Chair and Vice Chair annually. Each one alternates between a county-appointed Commissioner and a city-appointed Commissioner. The outgoing Chair is a city appointee, therefore the incoming Chair should be a county appointee and the incoming Vice Chair should be a city appointee. Those eligible to serve as Chair are Vice Chair Sarah Shigeris, Commissioner Henry Capers, Commissioner Zuri Hunter, Commissioner Matt Copac, Commissioner Diana Newkirk and Commissioner Kerry Wolk. May I have a nomination for Chair?
I would like to nominate Vice Chair Sarah Shigeris as Chair.
Thank you. That was, that nomination was by Commissioner Copac. Do we have any other nominations? No other nominations? Got to ask one more time for Robert's rule, or are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none, the nominations are, huh, oh, do I need a second? Okay.
Second.
All right, it's been seconded by Commissioner Ritchie to nominate Vice Chair Shigeris as Chair. All right, the nominations are closed. Vote now and separately or just one slate? Okay, votes less, okay. All in favor of Commissioner or Vice Chair Shigeris as Chair of the planning, Durham Planning Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, congratulations. Now we vote for Vice Chair and that should be a city appointee and those eligible to serve are Commissioner Cameron, Commissioner Anitra Bailey, Commissioner Zach Chakowski, Commissioner Juan Montez, Ramsey Ritchie and Commissioner Cory Piantac. May I have a nomination for Vice Chair? Commissioner Chakowski.
Yes, it is my absolute pleasure to nominate former Chair Kimberly Cameron to step into the role of Vice Chair and I think we would also be remiss if we didn't take a moment to acknowledge your, her service to the city and the County of Durham, so Chair Cameron, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
And to just put it in plain terms, you crushed it and we'll be lucky to have you in leadership still.
All right. Are there, thank you, are there any other nominations? All right, is there a second?
Second.
Oh my God. Everybody, all the city appointees. Hilarious, I'm going to say that was seconded by Commissioner Anitra Bailey, that's who heard first over here. Okay, since there are no other nominations, the nominations are closed. All in favor of Commissioner Kimberly Cameron as Vice Chair, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. We're done. All right, are there any staff announcements?
Yes, just one, please, you hopefully all got this email regarding the commission retreat. It will be on October 8th, tentatively from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, we will serve lunch. I am, if you put that yes you could attend on the doodle poll, I am assuming that is an RSVP of yes. If you have not filled out the doodle poll, please let me know if you'll be able to attend or not, just so we can make sure we order enough food, have enough materials and so forth. We may adjust those times dependent on what we ends up being on the agenda, but I feel like we're going to have a jam-packed itinerary for you. Also, we are, this does have to be a public meeting, so we will need to advertise it as a public meeting because hopefully we will have quorum. So we just need to do that, we have reserved the committee room on the second floor, that has been reserved already, so we will meet in there.
Can you send us a calendar invite for that?
We will, yes.
Thank you in that way.
Okay, yes, I will make sure you all have a calendar invite for that, yes.
So when he sends the calendar invite, make sure you say yes or no and then that'll help you with your.
And that'll be a great way for me to keep track of who is going to attend and who is not. Just one more thing, just, I mentioned this to a couple of you already, you've probably heard, next week's agenda is lengthy. We have seven items on the agenda for next month, so bring some snacks, bring some caffeine and we'll, we'll enjoy a rollicking good time together. That's all, that fast.
All right, is there, if there is no other business to come before this commission, we are adjourned.